Let's pray together. God, we're reminded of the wonder of your creation as we've come and moved around in our community this morning and seen the beauty of all that you've created. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of living in this place. I thank you for this board and their commitment to serve this community, and I pray that you give them wisdom as they do the work that you've called them to do today. Lord, we thank you for all of your good gifts, and we pray that we will be a people that share those good gifts with others. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Rosenberg, would you lead us into pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning again. The first order of business is to give everyone some sad news. Unfortunately, John Egerton has stepped down as county administrator. He's now going back to planning director. And I'd like to welcome Ernie Hoke, our new county administrator. Ernie, you have any words?
No, just glad to be here. Appreciate all the help and support I've gotten from the board and from staff, and looking forward to working with you all.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let's move into the agenda. We have an agenda before you, and I do have one addition, item 4.01A. We have a request from the school for critical needs to be funded, so let's put that there, 401.01A. Other than that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's move to the minutes of the last meeting. The chair will entertain, hopefully you've had a chance to read them. I'm sure everybody took them home and read them in infinite detail. So if you have, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, I mean, the minutes as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kind of a weak aye on that one.
Aye.
Okay. Let's move now to the consent agenda, and as your first official duty, Ernie, you can read the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the consent agenda this month, we have, the board will consider acceptance of the budget amendment for donation received from Mr. Delbert Homera for the extension office in the amount of $1,000. No local match is required. Number two, the board will consider acceptance and approval of a budget supplement for $1,300 donated by Swift for the victim witness program. The donated funds will be used to replace carpet tiles at 110 West Cameron Street office. No local match is required. The board will consider a budget amendment under the category of community services in the general fund for voluntary contributions received in the amount of $4,810.20 for DHS Children's Program and $5,046.31 for Senior Citizens Program. Next item, the board will consider $759,206 budget amendment for the Community Youth Services budget, the additional funding of $531,445 is state funding, and $227,761 is the local match required due to the greater than anticipated caseload and expenditures for comprehensive services. The board will consider a budget amendment for the school system, $100,000. The additional state funding will go to the school CIP fund for vestibule safety. The board will consider a budget amendment for the school system for $37,752.02 from the online sale of school buses. The school system requests that the additional funding be appropriated to the transportation line in the school CIP fund to accommodate funding for replacement of buses. The next item, the board will consider the acceptance of appropriation of $1,553 to the Burn Justice Assistance Grant received from the Department of Criminal Justice Service for the sheriff's office. A local match of $173 is required and will come from the sheriff's operating budget. The next item, the board will consider accepting and approving a budget amendment for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for a $500 donation received from the Culpeper Midday Lions Club for Kids' Day Fishing Day on June 6th, 2015. And the final item, the board will consider accepting and approving the state reimbursement of $16,906.94 for the Culpeper Airport Terminal renovations. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that wish to be discussed separately? If not, the board will entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we approve it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Anyone? Second? Thank you. Everybody's kind of slow in the seconds this morning. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll move now to general county business. The first item up is an outdoor entertainment festival permit. And I understand Ms. Teresa Griffiths, who applied for permit, is not able to be with us. So if you have any questions, I guess Barry, you can kick it off and tell us what it's about. Go ahead. You're up.
This application is for the annual tractor pull that they've done for the last five years at the agricultural center. All required paperwork has been done. The payment's been made for the permit, and all we need is approval from the board now.
Any questions of staff? What's your pleasure? Have a motion approved? Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item 4.01A is, we had a request from the school system for some critical needs. The request basically involves the funding of two positions, two teaching positions, for a math teacher and a English teacher, which the school say they critically need. Unfortunately, we did not consider this before we did the budget, or it was probably requested in the budget, but we did not necessarily fund it. So they're saying if at all possible, they'd like to have some additional funding to cover those positions. I have had some discussion with the school system and told them that if we did fund it, since we've already kind of laid out the tax rate, we can't go up, so we'd have to pull it from general fund, and it would be a one-time infusion, and that they would have to figure out how to fund it next year. And they understand that. So we have that item before you for discussion.
I don't like starting a precedent of, you know, having these things come after we have the public comment, public meeting. That's my only concern with this. And also, I'm a little bit, why two positions? Do we have somebody here to speak on the positions?
My concern along the same line is why now? Why nothing before when it could be explained and everything?
Well, I believe, and Ms. Hutchinson's here, if we need her to actually speak to this, but I think the request was in the budget line item, but we opted to only give them $500,000 of additional funding. So because of that, they are going to have to cut some positions, and those are two of the positions that would not be funded.
The cutting positions?
So it was requested, English and math.
They're actually cutting, and this is just putting them so they don't have to cut them.
No, they had asked for the two. Well, this is, why don't you come up and explain? If you don't mind.
Good morning. I didn't anticipate being up here, but thank you for the opportunity. The two positions are critical needs, positions in math and English due to growth. They were in the budget already as requested as part of our budget request. They were not funded, and if we do not have these positions, we'll have to cut elsewhere in order to provide those positions.
Have them either way.
We have to have them for students. We have to have them in front of the students because of the numbers of students. So we have to cut somewhere else. Where? I'm not really sure. Dr. Johnson isn't here, so since she's been out of the office for a while, I don't have that information to share.
So if, the two positions are, how much are we talking about?
57, approximately 57,000 a piece, so basically about $100,000.
And if we were to fund these, then next year, you're going to have to cut somewhere because, you know, we're saying that we're going to follow up.
Well, the possibility is that needs may shift. We may lose positions next year in some areas that, as the population growth changes, our needs change, the curriculum changes. There's always the possibility that we may not fill a position when someone leaves, which could cover that.
There's no reason why we can't do this as a budget amendment afterwards when we get the actual, actual information from the superintendent. I mean, we can do a budget amendment at any point in time. I mean, we don't have to do it as part of the overall budget at this point in time. It's not necessary to do that right now.
Well, I feel like since we're here today, we're working on the budget, we may as well complete the budget. I too think, you know, this sets a little bit of a precedent, but critical needs as far as the math and English teacher to me is very important. And I know that you all set programs and the curriculum, and then I'm hopeful next year that you'll look within to see where you can change, make changes. But this year, if it's very important, it's late in the season, you do have to hire, I would be in favor of doing it this year. Since we do have the funds in the general fund, it's not like we're going to have to raise the rates, and we can't do it anyway, but...
Right.
I don't have a clear picture on how much increase or what percentage are the teachers getting this year from the state and from here and from everybody? What are you giving the teachers?
Well, again, I'm not prepared, Mr. Chase. I'm sorry.
I know. There's no clear answer. That's what, nobody's been prepared for.
Well, we, we...
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, I'm not...
No, I understand that. We haven't decided on how that's going to play out because you haven't approved the budget yet. Once you approve the budget, then we'll figure out how we're going to address that.
Well, I'm talking about what's built into the budget right now.
The request for the school, I think I can address, the original request was for 1.4 million of additional funding, which included teacher raises, which I think was about 2.5% overall, I think.
It matches, well, what we have right now from you is going to, again, I'm not prepared to tell you, to answer all these questions, but it will assist with the state requirement for the SOQ positions, which is 1.5. Thank you, Jim.
But they're sending you some money too, the state is.
Right. Yes.
And so that's what I, the combination, I think in the county, why aren't we giving our employees 2%?
Well, they're going to get, they're going to wind up, if we give them the $500,000, which is what is currently in the budget, their increase is going to be something around 1%, one, maybe 1.2%. They have, they're getting 836,000 from the states. We're giving them additional $500,000.
But what's that total up to? How many percentage points?
About, if the budget stands as it is, they'll have about a 1 point or 1.25% increase for the teachers.
I understood it. See, that's the problem I'm having with it.
Well, that's the way the numbers work out. It's my understanding.
That's what the state...
I'd sure like to see it, if I could see it in writing, I'd sure like to, because I, I thought it worked out 3% because we were arguing over the whole, you're upper, you weren't evening it out. I mean, some are, you're starting, you're worried about your starting teacher salary.
Well, we're actually worried about them all because we have issues all through the salary scale, but we are not able to implement the Evergreen study with the funding that we have right now to further implement that. We have, last year, we decompressed the steps, but we have not been able to do the second half of the study that we got from Evergreen to make the salaries compensated with, or comparable to surrounding areas. That's not going to happen this year. We don't have the funds to do that this year. It will simply be matching the state's money for SOQ positions.
Well, I never will get over the time I went to the high school and they were sitting there with five principals and said I wasn't allowed to see the chief principal until I went through the lower principal. So maybe that's just a personal thing, right? But I...
Okay.
Well, I for one, I mean, I want to work with the school board and, you know, get things completed and what have you, but I mean, as you were saying, if you, I mean, we didn't approve this before, and you're saying you could cut from somewhere else. I mean, for me, I'd be willing to maybe, today, if we were going to do this today, fund maybe one of the positions and let you guys take care of the other position, because I'm not for doing the whole two positions. I just think that we all need to look at our budgets, and it just upsets me that it was done after we already had the public meeting and discussed all this. No, I mean, and I know you guys brought it forward, but I just think it's a little after the fact.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think the school, well, anyway, they asked for the positions. We're the ones that cut them.
Well, that's it. She asked for it. I know that they asked for it, not you.
It was in, it was in Dr. Johnson's, in our budget, yes.
Right.
The request was there.
But I mean, just that it's coming to us now, I would, I would, I mean, I want to work with them, but I just, I'd prefer just doing one position at this point.
All right, so you're talking about $114,000 roughly, if you refund both positions. So what's the flavor of the board? Do y'all want to do all apart, or, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I kind of agree with Ms. Fritz. I had a long conversation with my school board rep, and I understand your concerns here, but I believe it would be in the best interest of everyone if we were to fund one of these positions, let them find the other somewhere else, and just pull that money from a general fund, amend this budget, you've got a healthy general fund, and it's certainly not going to hurt anything. And then when we get back into this process next year, then I think we need to look hard at it.
Right.
But I think that maybe we have missed something here, and I certainly would put a motion on the floor to approve one of those positions, to amend the budget 57,000 in order to fund it and pull that money from the general fund balance.
So that's, okay. So we have a motion on the floor then to fund one position at 57,000. You'll have to figure out which one of those we're funding. Is there a second to the motion? We have a second.
And I, and I hope that maybe next year, we can have a different dialogue early on in the process. I know that you all do make the decision on what you need, but I think we need to be brought in earlier so we can be on the same page so that we don't do this at the end. And maybe, you know, you'd appreciate some of our input, maybe not, but I would like to see us have a better dialogue earlier in the season.
Okay, Valerie, you've got the information there. How does that affect our budget?
Yes, sir. I have enough, well, I don't want to get the cart before the horse because you need to go through your other options first, but we do have a prepared budget on hand. It's an additional 60,000 that would increase the budget that was proposed and advertised by the 60,000 with an appropriation resolution to match that as well.
Okay.
The increase in that only affects your fund balance percentage by a tenth of a hundredth of a percent.
A hundredth of a percent?
What would bring it from 15...
I'm not sure we can live with that.
15.41 down to 15.40, so I think, you know...
Got it, okay. So you have, you have that amendment and ready to go at 60,000?
Yes, sir.
Is the board okay? Would you amend your motion for 60,000 as opposed to 60,000?
Yes, sir. And if, maybe this is premature here, maybe we need to go through the budget and do a supplemental appropriation after the budget's approved. I mean, if that'll make it easier on the accounting process, then that certainly can be done too.
I think she's fine as we're, yeah, she's okay with what we're doing.
I amend the motion to that.
Okay, so we have a, all right. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to fund one position for 60,000. Valerie's got the information for us on the budget when we move forward the next step. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Next item is the tax rates for calendar 2015. Valerie, you want to go over those? Or, Ernie, are you going to do it?
I can take that. The proposed tax rates for 2015, as advertised, 66 cents on the real estate, 7 cents on the fire and rescue, and those are equalized rates based on the reassessment. The personal property is $3.50 and is no change. Personal property recreational is $1.50 and is no change. Aircraft is .004 and no change. Machinery and tools are $2 and no change, and motor vehicles, 30 passengers or more, are $1 with no change. That's the rates that have been proposed and advertised and are waiting your approval.
So I'm sure the board is aware, many of you have been here longer than I have, but you know that we can go down on the tax rate, we can go up. So does anyone like, are you happy with them as presented, or do you want to make a change? If not, we'll entertain a motion to move forward as presented, or as advertised.
I'd like to make the motion to go as advertised and adjourned presented.
Okay, we have a motion to move forward as presented. Is there a second? We have a second. Okay, we have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll now move to the county budget. So Valerie, if you would, tell us where we are.
I believe what's in your board docs information was the budget that was advertised and presented back at your public hearing on the 21st, but with adding the additional 60,000 to the, for the schools, it takes your budget for FY 1516 to 154,127,043.
Okay. And that, do you have the resolution we need to sign as well to amend that, make that amendment? Or do we need to, we don't need to do that at this point, do we?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so you have the budget information with the change we made this morning? Any further discussion on that? If not, we'll entertain a motion to move forward with budget as presented. No one wishes to make a motion? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so Valerie, if you'd repeat with the motion, we have a motion to approve the budget of, and repeat the numbers. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we need to move to the budget resolution or appropriations resolution. So you have the budget before you and...
No, 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 you missed capital improvement.
Oh, oh, sorry, missed capital improvements. So we have a CIP plan before you and should be on your board docs. There's been no changes, I think, since our last presentation, but, so if anyone would like to make a change or if you would like to discuss it?
I'd like to, a discussion. There were some changes, weren't there, to the CIP for the schools?
I do have a few slides, if you want me to go through those, Mr. Chairman, or...
Yeah. Probably a good idea, just to bring, keep us familiar.
So the CIP process followed the same one it has in the past. We began back in November, meeting with departments, gathered all the projects. The planning commission did review the proposed CIP. It was further vetted by the county administrator, finance director, and ultimately by the board of supervisors. As Ms. Hanson just mentioned, there were some changes made through the budget process. The categories that are in the CIP, just running through those quickly, the airport includes just $3,500 this year from the general fund, which is matched by 171,500 in federal and state dollars. The buildings and grounds line has $100,000 total, all coming from the general fund. Education, which is one that underwent some changes, stands at $1,217,000. That is general fund money, but about $1,008,000 of that comes from the turned-in money from fiscal year '14, and I'll detail those numbers in just a minute. IT, continued implementation of our IT upgrades is $345,000. Parks and Rec Department has no CIP funds slated for this budget year. Public safety is the big-ticket item, a little over $4 million, primarily towards the new radio system. The landfill required no additional CIP funds this year. Under the public works roads, there'd be $1,010,000 that we would utilize to be matched with VDOT funds under the revenue sharing program. And finally, underwater and sewer, there's $160,000 coming from the general fund for a couple of different projects, and we continue to carry the 3.5 million potential funding, which all would come from the Department of Corrections if the Coffeywood Water Line comes to fruition. Your total from the general fund is about $6.8 million. Nothing debt-funded out of the CIP this year, and funds coming from other sources such as VDOT, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the Department of Aviation are about $2.2 million. So you have a grand total of about $12.5 million for the FY 16 CIP. Just quickly, the airport project I mentioned, which is primarily federal and state-funded, is an engineering project to design the extension of Greenhouse Road on the east side of the airport. The buildings and grounds costs are for a new tractor, as well as some courthouse bathroom renovations. Under education, the projects that we ended up funding in the CIP include the access improvements at AG Richardson and Pearl Sample Elementary School. We know that's a longstanding traffic issue out there on Route 15, and so that is funded in the CIP. There are rooftop units at Sycamore Park Elementary, a roof replacement at Pearl Sample Elementary, a resurfacing of the parking area at AG Richardson, and then money for master planning, the renovations at Culpeper Middle School and at Sycamore Park. Under information technology, again, it's $300,000 for our implementation of IT upgrades. There's also a upgrade of the IBM i series of $45,000, which turns out to be cheaper to buy a new machine than to continue with the maintenance on the old one, so that has been included. Public safety, as I noted, was the big-ticket item. We have the $400,000 for the Fire and Rescue Association, hopefully offset by the soft billing. We have radio system upgrades. We have a new telephone system for the county, the potential of a new tower either at Laurel Valley or elsewhere for communications needs, and we have a generator at the jail. The road projects, as I mentioned, are all revenue sharing, primarily new 2016 secondary road paving projects. We do have some additional unmatched money coming from VDOT for the Western Outer Loop, and underwater and sewer, sewer taps at $160,000 and potentially the Department of Corrections' water line. And that concludes the CIP, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, pretty thorough review. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question on, the master plan for Sycamore Park School is 50,000, and then we, there's a replacement of rooftop units for Sycamore Park for 345,000. I'm wondering if, if that is not getting the cart before the horse in terms of, should we be doing the master plan before we start to do the rooftop air conditioning units? If in fact that they change the way the design is, does that make sense to be putting those units in? And just a question in terms of, as we added the overall plan for, for the renovations, I know the air conditioning units were in before, before we added that, but it seems to me that we should do the plan first before we start putting in $345,000 for air conditioning units that may not work in the, in the new design or overall plan.
If I can address that, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I know that the rooftop units have been a priority for a number of years, and I think that they feel they need to be replaced sooner than later, and that the master plan is a longer-term issue. You know, the master plan will, will set us in good position to go forward with a major renovation, but that still may be several years down the road before any actual construction takes place, and I don't think they feel the rooftop units can wait that long.
It seems, again, you know, that we should investigate that a little bit more before we go investing in the rooftop units. If that's replacing exactly the same thing that we have now, and it may be a completely different design in terms of, I kind of looked at Jack, if you have some input on that, because I know that's your, part of your business.
Yeah. My thinking on that is that even the renovation work at the school, the square footage of the building will not change, so the sizing on these units should not matter. There is quite a bit of work and issues that involved out there as far as air conditioning, heating, that type of thing, but bottom line is, the sizes of these units should not matter because the square footage of the building is not going to change. Thank you.
And I'm not a HVAC guy, but I would echo that. They're replacing the units that power the current footprint of the building, and that's really not going to change. If you add anything to the building, they're probably going to have to add additional units to carry that load, so it shouldn't affect the current load that we have. And I agree with Jack that, you know, they've been, it's been a priority for a while. I think the school system has been pretty patient with us, so I think, I think we should go ahead and fund it and move it forward.
Okay.
So, is there any further discussion on the CIP? Are you ready for the question?
Everyone has...
For a motion?
Yeah.
Well, since all the women are making all the motions this morning, especially the money issues, I move that we approve the capital improvement plan.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the plan as presented with the amendments as John has indicated. Is there a second? Thank you. The ladies are stepping up today. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And the next is the appropriations resolution, which I tried to get to earlier, so...
We'll let the guys do that.
Pardon?
We'll let the men do that.
Yeah. All right, so before you is a resolution to approve the budget, to appropriate the money as presented earlier with the amendment, with the amendments that have been made. So are there any questions or comments before, or will, the chair will entertain a motion to move forward as we have already indicated?
Move to appropriate.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Everybody happy, ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, thank you, John and Valu, for all your work. And now we'll move to the, I'm sure that everybody's been anxiously awaiting this presentation. So we'll now move to Dominion Power, they're going to make a presentation on the potential new power line. And Mr. Meadows, I guess you're going to be the one? Okay?
Thank you for the opportunity to come before the board and the citizens of Culpeper to talk about the recent activity with the Remington to Pratt's Gordonsville Transmission Line. The Transmission Line actually impacts three separate counties in this area, Culpeper, Orange, and Madison Counties. And we met Mr. Hope about Madison County, so he, he is also familiar with, with the-
He's double-teaming you.
He is kind of double-teaming, yes he is. We, uh, we're presently trying to solve issues that involve the reliability with the substation that is in Madison County called Pratt's. Pratt's serves about eighty-eight hundred customers in a six-county area that surrounds that, that facility there at Pratt's. Presently, that substation is being fed by one transmission line. It's very complicated the way that it works. Dominion Substation at Gordonsville feeds the Transmission Line that is owned by First Energy, and then the substation belongs to Rapid Hannick Electric. So there is actually three entities involved. Rapid Hannick Electric is actually here with us today as, as support in this project. We are, we, we need to make this upgrade to help improve the reliability of that line. To do that, it's very much like if you had two roads coming into your house and one gets blocked, you do have another access. With this, there's only one line feeding Pratt's, so if that line goes out of service, Rapid Hannick has a very difficult time, and it takes a lot of switching time to be able to feed the customers by other sources or other substations that may be around it. This would give the ability to have a second feed from a different source, which would be from Remington, to be able to feed this load that is there at Pratt's Substation. We are partnering with First Energy with this project. First Energy would have to do the upgrade of the existing line from Gordonsville to Pratt's after Dominion would build a new line from Remington down our existing corridor, from Remington down to a point somewhere near Rapidan or somewhere just a little north of that, near the Coffeywood facility that is there, and cut over on a couple of routes that we presented in our meetings that we had with the, the folks here in these counties. We had two open houses, one was on April second, one was on April fifteenth, to get county input. A little bit of information on PJM. PJM is the transmission operator for a multi-state area, and PJM decides when projects need to be upgraded. It was discovered, Dominion discovered that we had some issues with the Pratt's area and also with voltage concerns and problems with our own transmission system and the way the transmission feeds. And this project was actually brought to my attention in early, actually the end of two thousand thirteen, and we began working on it in two thousand and fourteen. During that time, PJM has been mandated to come up with what they call open-window projects. And in this case, this was the second one in Virginia where it becomes open to other companies to be able to come in and actually bid on doing work in Dominion and First Energy's territory. So there were sixteen proposals given for this project. Dominion had a few of those proposals. And then Dominion and First Energy's proposal was awarded on, in February. And so that's why it looks like, to the people of the counties, it looks like we were trying to rushing into this thing, but it actually took a while for PJM to look at all the proposals and then agree which one is the one that they thought would be the best fix for the problem that is encountered right now within this area, so. We, in the open houses, the community engagement was really, really well-received by us. It was probably one of the more civil community engagements that I've been in. Everyone came in, they were greatly concerned about, you know, the Transmission Line crossing their property, whether or not it came through their property or it came through their neighbor's property. In that process, we, it's not just a, we're, we're doing this because we have to, because we actually don't have to, by the way. The State Corporation Commission, which is the next entity that would have to look at this, that process is set up so that we can find out information that we may not know. This morning, before I came to this meeting, I went to look at a Civil War cemetery that we weren't aware of, but one of the property owners actually told us about it. I went by there and took a look at it this morning, just to make sure I knew exactly where it was and it didn't match our maps. But we received a lot of great input. It's during that time that we also find out that whether or not someone is getting ready to do something different with their property and put it in possibly a conservation easement or do something else with it that is contrary to what, that is just normal land use. They're doing something with that property to either tie that property up, like I said, into a conservation easement. And it also gives us a chance to find out the historical data on people's property. And we received a lot of great information. And a lot of folks came in, they were concerned, didn't really want it on their property, but they would just, they, they left us notes or they sent us emails and they said, "Can you just move it over to the edge of the property?" I mean, I could live with, I don't want it, but I could live with it was better there. And we made those changes as well, when we, we go back and revise all our information. We actually presented two proposals within a great big work area. We initially gave out information that just showed a large triangle of, of area within the counties and said this was the area that we were studying. And that brought a large engagement in with the county. Then we proposed two routes within that area because State Corporation Commission likes to always have an alternate route so that they have something to review versus the one that we may present. We haven't made a choice yet on any of these routes, but due to all the public input, we have discovered that there are a lot of constraints. If you look at this map, it's a very busy map, but all of those hashed-out areas and especially the circled areas, those are areas that are constrained for one reason or another. They're historic, or, you know, they have, we have the scenic value of some of those areas, and we also have a lot of conservation easements in those areas. So we, we take those routes with the information we originally had, then we take the information that the public gave us, and then we try to work our way around all these routes. The, there is a purple line on this route, and this would be new to this board. It was new to the board in orange just last week. And that's, that's an area where we discovered in our process that there were some pending conservation easements on the route that is orange. And so we tried to work our way around, trying to come up with a different routes. And believe it or not, it impacted almost the same property owners to be able to come up with a different route and tie this together in a way that we can try to get from point A to point B. And again, it still impacts a lot of folks in these counties, and a lot of people are very concerned about where the route's going to go. But a lot of folks are already asking about, where is the information on the purple route? We're still tweaking it and working with it a little bit because we're still getting some input, just like this morning. I went to verify, like I said, the cemetery site, but that's on our existing route, which is the brown line, so. And that's basically the crux of where we're at, so, and then I'm open for questions, any of them?
I'm sure there are going to be some, so let's open it up for questions. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll start it, yes. The, uh, the purple line, since the purple line is new, what will you all do as far as moving forward with the purple line? Will you all have a public hearing on the, on the purple line? Or how will you move forward with that?
Well, see, the great thing about the purple line is it does fall within the orange line and the green line. We made notification, all the property owners are within that triangle that that orange line and green line takes into account. And as I said earlier, that purple line actually impacts, uh, pretty much, I think, except for maybe one or two people, the exact same number of property owners that were already notified about the orange line.
So you're saying that you don't have to-
No, sir, I wasn't planning on having another open house to talk about the-
My thinking on it is, is that the area down there around Rapidan and those places, it's going to, you know, be an ideal opportunity to have a public hearing there at Rapidan Fire Department, where you can get all those locals there. And I just think that, by looking at this, and I've spent quite a bit of time, you know, by the way, I represent the area, this area of Culpeper County, Cedar Mountain area. I think a lot of locals there just don't know what's going to happen with this. And I just think that it would certainly be advantageous to you all to have another public hearing, especially a local public hearing, so, and make sure that everybody knows about it.
Well, we are actually, the Rapidan Historical Society has asked us to come and talk to them, and we have agreed to come and talk to them. And so it will give us an opportunity to, to address some of the concerns of the folks there in that area.
Now, the reason for the, the purple line is versus the orange line, is it the historical area there that you were touching coming around Cedar Mountain? Is that the reason for the possible moving? And also the easements in the Horseshoe Farm area?
Yes, sir, what, when we found out after we had the open houses that there were some pending Virginia Outdoor Federation Conservation Easements in that area. And by those being that area, we try to avoid those whenever we can, wherever we're trying to route a new line, because they're, again, they're pending, and that, that property owner has a specific reason for wanting to do that with their property. And we try to, you know, make sure that we, try to help the, the property owner to make sure we stay off their property if we can and work our way around it. So that, that is part of the reason that we moved to that purple line. And again, it also impacted basically the same property owners. If we moved down, it made the distance a little shorter, which makes the two lines more comparable. And we tied them together sooner down where that green line runs into the purple line.
So you're saying that the two lines now, the green line and the purple line, are the same distance as far as-
No, sir, they're not the same distance, but they're closer to the same distance. The green line, originally, as we proposed it, right now, it has a lot of jags and moves in it. Originally, it was much straighter, and all of those moves and jags are from information we got from the open houses, where property owners would say, "I'm not asking for you to move it off of me, but if you could move it to the edge of my property, skirt a couple of edges and get around it." And we've discovered some new, right near the, I guess it's right near the Madison and Culpeper line, we discovered some new BOF conservation easements there that we knew we needed to work our way around. And so that, it's basically information we got from the open houses that had us to turn those straighter lines into a lot of turn lines.
Well, that, you know, we don't like to talk about it, but we always look at costs. You know, when I first looked at this, I, you know, you know, this one line is a lot longer than the other line. And it just, I know we don't want to like talk about costs, but bottom line is cost. And it's just, it just seems like to me that even with the turns and jags in the green line, that that would certainly be the logical way to go as far as cost is concerned. I realize that, you know, there's other issues involved here, but, uh, go ahead.
Well, and the, the public has another chance for involvement when it goes to the SCC. The SCC will get to choose the routes, and they may even commission their own routing study and come up with a different route than what I did. We originally started off with the orange and the green route because with the information we had from the counties, those two routes, we were able to work around the existing BOF easements and historical areas. And so those are the ones we brought, and since then, we've been continuing to tweak it since April fifteenth was the last open house.
The, the area that's coming down in there behind Cedar Mountain, even the purple area, it's going to impact, uh, have a big impact on a historical area. That, you know, spent a lot of time down there in the last few weeks. And it, it just seems like to me that that area, and you've got to be there to appreciate it, hadn't changed a whole lot since eighteen sixty-two when that battle was. And this line will impact that area forever. And I just hope that you all take that into-
Yes, sir, we very much-
-consideration when you make your final decision. I got one more question. What is the, excuse me, what is the timeframe on applying State Corporation Commission as far as the permit application?
Our hope is to make our application before the end of spring.
We have another question from Mr. Chase.
I've got one question. It didn't have to do with these power lines, but it has to do with Dominion Power, and I don't get it very often to ask somebody questions other than calling Susan on the telephone. And, but, and I know, the, the, where I represent the farm are both Dominion Power and Rapid Hannick Electric Services. And I think your policies are different, but on Dominion Power, where there is existing power lines on a farm, and they're trying to build a house or electricity on a separate part of the farm, which is going to require three or four poles, does Dominion Power pay for those poles?
Well, our distribution system is a little different than our transmission system because distribution is actually feeding the source to the customer. And generally, those easements received from the customer are not paid-for easements. Transmission lines, we pay for transmission easements. So the, it's, it's all developed into the cost of how to feed someone on a, like a new piece of property. And all that, sometimes they do overhead and underground comparisons. I'm not real versed on our distribution system and how we, we feed and, and come up with the costing of how we feed a customer. And like I said, I'm basically more on the high-voltage lines. But I know that if we do underground overhead comparisons, sometimes it's cheaper for the customer to go one way or the other. And, and again, this is feeding and-
You're saying the customer pays then, if it's cheaper for the customer?
I, I think so. It's been, it's been twenty years since I was in our distribution department.
Well, I'll call and get an answer.
I have a question.
Okay, you have another question?
I have one question. I'm not well-versed in heights of poles, but why are you going from fifty-three to seventy feet and a hundred and seven feet? Why?
The existing line runs from Remington to Gordonsville. And for years, that line was called the number two line. And we started with number one, so number two tells you how old that line was. Those easements were originally acquired nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight. And so when that line was originally built, it built sort of a set number of customers for the future. And that line was built at then whatever code there was, it was built probably in nineteen forties. And as far as National Electric Safety Code and things like that, that's what dictates how high the wire has to be off of certain areas. It's different over roadways than it is over where places are just pedestrian traffic. And so when that line was originally built, it served the needs at the time. Now, we, whenever we go to upgrade something, we go under the new National Electric Safety Code guidelines as far as the height above traveled roadways, you know, people's farms and things like that. So we have to increase that height. But to be able to put two transmission lines in a single line right away, that line right now is fifty-five feet average, and that's an average height. Some of those poles are taller, some of them might be a little bit shorter, because everything we do is a typical structure and an average. But it is now a horizontal-built line. All three conductors are at the same level, hanging from an arm on a, what's we call an H-frame. To be able to put two lines in the same corridor and not need a lot of additional right-of-way, we have to put in a monopole, a steel pole, that would be like the brown look, we call it quartin steel. We would put in a steel pole, and that pole would have one circuit on one side and one circuit on the other. And that keeps those lines, those lines would be stacked, a vertical construction on each side. And that allows you to utilize the same corridor and put two transmission lines in the corridor that was one. Well, you can imagine that when you begin to stack your conductors, there has to be a certain amount of space between those to be able to work on and maintain them. So that just makes everything a lot taller in the same corridor.
Is that the same type of line that's going to Charlottesville on twenty-nine? We've seen you big lines.
We don't, we don't have a line like going down twenty-nine? I think that was probably Rapid Hannick's line.
Okay, but I wonder if it's similar.
We, we have a line here in Culpeper that goes from Mountain Run Substation, where the chair mark facility is, that goes through the Campbell's property, Croftburn Farm, and goes out to Sevensburg Tap. That used to be a lower H-frame line, and in two thousand and seven, I was here before this board, and we actually changed that line into two lines. And it would be very similar to that line, although that line is both one hundred and fifteen thousand volts. And the new line would be a two hundred and thirty thousand volt line and a one fifteen thousand. So it does increase the spacing just a little bit, and it also increases a little bit of the ground clearance going to two hundred and thirty thousand volts.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. The green line, excuse me, the green line and then the purple line. So the green line is leading into the purple, and the purple's leading into the brown. So the green line, if you left it as it currently is depicted, would even, would it even come into Culpeper County? Or does it miss Culpeper County?
The green line only comes into Culpeper County right in that horizontally hashed area that is on Horseshoe Farm, the Horseshoe Farm area right there by the Rapidan River. It's only in Culpeper County, probably less than a mile, just less than a mile, probably point nine five, point nine seven.
And it is, is the green line also the shortest line and most direct route for you? As it's currently depicted?
Yes, sir. When we, when we go to the SCC, one of the first routes that we always pick is try to get there as short as possible, because that's what the SCC, knowing that all of that cost gets turned over to the ratepayer in the end, we, we always try to pick the shortest route because we know that that's what the SCC likes to try to find, for us to try to find the shortest route between two points.
Well, it looks to me like the green line, and again, I'm just looking at this map, and it is a very confusing map.
Yes, sir, it is.
I mean, I see a lot of blotches up there, but it looks to me like that the green line really disturbs, you know, fewer of the sensitive areas than the green and purple together does. So it seems to me like the green line is the most logical way to go. But again, I'm not a power person, but just from looking at the map. So do you, do you guys have a preference at this point, or you have a-
No, sir. I, I generally don't go into the preference until we file with the SCC. And then we're, we, we usually like to create and, and say what our preference is, but then we also give them all the other alternatives. And there are, there are other alternatives to this. And it would be foolish on our part to go to the SCC without having other alternatives because, again, they could commission their own route study, or they could pick one of our routes. But the green line is the shortest route.
So currently, the three proposals you have then are the green line tying into the purple, the green line as it currently exists, and then the orange line going up on the northern side.
Right.
Okay. And you're going to- Okay. And you're going to present two of those to the FCC?
I, I'm actually going to present probably all of them, but I'll also say what the constraints are with them all.
Okay, okay.
The section coming through Culpeper, the small section through Horseshoe, is that on existing right away or is that new right away?
There's absolutely no new right away in, in that area at all. The only new, existing right away is the brown line.
Okay.
And there was some talk, John, I'd like to bring you into the conversation, there was some talk about a state code that says that we can establish power line corridors and we can therefore mandate them to stay within those corridors because we put those in our comprehensive plan. Can you, you know, exa, you know, not exaggerate, exa, expand is the word I'm looking for. Expand on that for us, please, and tell us how that really works.
Sure. And there, there was a, some indication or a letter to the editor that spoke of the state code sections and the ability potentially of counties to have had these designated in their comprehensive plan and that Dominion would have to follow those. The reality is that the state code indicates that comprehensive plans may include a whole laundry list of things, one of which is corridors for major transmission lines. And in fact, Culpeper County's comprehensive plan does include such a map and the corridors it reflects are the existing corridors. It would obviously very, be very difficult for us to propose new corridors. We would have a major impact on people's property and we don't have the technical expertise to know where those lines would go. So, from our point of view, we've, we've actually implemented that piece of state code. We reflect the existing corridors in our comprehensive plan. The same letter, just for the board's information, indicated that Prince William County had, had implemented this piece of state code and had successfully battled Dominion or, or something like that was suggested. We have talked to Prince William County, their comprehensive plan includes a map almost identical to Culpeper's. It shows only existing corridors, no new corridors. We further pressed them on whether they'd had new corridors proposed that their comprehensive plan had helped them with. They indicated that there are currently two new lines being proposed in Prince William, which are on new corridors and that they would simply add those corridors to their plan if the SCC eventually approves them. So, comprehensive plan issue is really, again, Culpeper's done all it can do on that front, but it's not going to be a deciding factor in this process.
Well, I just wanted you to go over that because I thought there was some confusion about that. People sometimes think we have more authority to do things than we do. It's always good that everybody know what we can and can't do. And Dominion, I'd like to compliment you guys, you're certainly trying to work with us. I think in with the public, you're taking public input and trying to make accommodations where you can. So, from my two cents, it looks like the green line is the way to go, but anyway. Any further comment from anyone or?
One question.
Yeah.
What is the date on the Rapid Hand meeting for the Rapid Hand that you're going to have?
And you know where that's going to be held?
The firehouse.
At the firehouse? Okay. Will you have some of these maps and that as well and some of the information you had from the public hearing?
Just as a clarification.
Come to the mic if you would. People on TV can't hear you when you're sitting over there, so we'd like...
Greg Matthew with Dominion, colleague of Rusty. It would be a public information session. The, the foundation has asked us to speak. It's a different process just for clarification than to call it a hearing. The State Corporation Commission holds hearings. What we're doing from a Dominion standpoint is holding public engagement sessions. The State Corporation Commission has a process where they will have hearings at Richmond. If, they typically do have local hearings if asked and that is a formal process that the State Corporation Commission holds. I just want to make sure terminology is, is different.
So, when you can have this public gathering?
No, it's a public engagement.
Engagement.
You've got to be politically correct.
It is May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, and that's going to be the Rapid Hand Fire Hall?
Correct. Firehouse.
Okay. All right, and then...
They're typically scheduled annual meeting.
Okay. And then when you submit...
Monthly meeting, sorry.
And when the, when it goes to the SC, the State Corporation Commission, there will be a time that public comment, public, I can't talk today, public comment will be solicited? And they may have public hearings at that point?
That is correct.
Okay. And do we know, I guess you have no knowledge at this point if they'll have a public hearing in this area?
Not at this time. Once the, the application is submitted, a schedule gets worked on and it's formally published. There is usually a significant time period for written comments from the public or interested parties and then there's points in time in which physical hearings will occur either in Richmond again or locally depending on requests where witnesses can come up and formally give oral testimony as to, as to their interest in the case.
Well, if you could do us the favor then, once that process starts, could you inform John Egerton or Ernie so we can, we can then decide if we would like to maybe request a public hearing to further, get further information as, as the process goes forward?
And we, we publish the schedule on our website, the project page for on dom.com. We'll also include it as well, but certainly I'll give the information to you.
If you're waiting on us to go to the website, you know, it might not happen, so...
Just want to, but we can link if that's, just so people, the more ways people can find out, the better.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you could maybe link it to our site, that'd be perfect. Okay, good. Any, any further comments, questions?
Yes, we have one more question, I made more than one. The right away, I think there's a misconception about right away. We know about the existing right away where the existing line goes. The new right away, purple line there, that's all going to be new, all acquired right away?
Yes, sir. That's a hundred and twenty foot wide newly acquired right away that we would need to get from that existing line to the Pratt Substation area that's there now.
Mr. Walker?
I was just, considering the purple line is brand new concept and so forth, would it be appropriate for us to ask you to come back to, to make a presentation on the, if, if in fact you move forward on the purple line is, right now, you're kind of like, well, we just put this line on the map so you not really have a lot of detail on it right at this point.
Well, we will be putting the detail of that, the individual tiles where you can zoom in on that, that we have now of the green and the orange. We're hoping within at least a week, we should have all of the tiles on there and available on that purple line as well where you can zoom right in on it to see the exact location.
So, so if next month you have more information and if we desired, we could ask you to come back? Thank you.
I'll accommodate that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as this moves forward, if I'm not mistaken, I think Horseshoe is in an Ag and Forest District presently, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, then this board's going to see this again if you, if you continue that path because this board's got to approve them going through that Ag and Forest District and it's incumbent upon them to show that there's no detrimental effect on that Ag and Forest District. So, it will run the gamut here through the committee, the planning commission, and this board, should they take the route that's going to affect that Ag and Forest District.
Well, and if you notice, except for the orange route, both of those routes go through the Horseshoe.
I'm sorry.
Okay, are we, are we done?
Going forward, I thank you, you all for coming and answering questions.
Mr. Mike on?
Yes, sir, thank you.
The, going forward with this, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put out some discussion here about, like I say, going forward with, I think that the people that is affected by this needs to have a chance to be able to have their say. And whether, and I'm sure that they'll probably have their, some of their say tonight at the public forum, but I think that maybe we need to set up a public hearing for this at, next month, give these people an opportunity to speak and then going forward with that, we can maybe establish what our stance is at that informational session, if you will.
Well, I'm not really sure how we need to approach that. I mean, you really haven't decided on your roots and you haven't gotten all the information out at this point, have you?
No.
So, you're still working through your process.
We're still working through a few tweaks in the line, but we are getting close in, in trying to meet the needs of everyone who asked for tweaks in the line and trying to come up with that other alternative that we're very close on, yes, sir.
And so, on May the fourteenth, you're going to have the public information session that's going to be at Rapid Hand at the Fire Hall.
Yes, sir.
So, most of the people that have any concerns would be able to speak and express those concerns to you at that point, ask questions and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Then after that session, I assume that you're going to sort of, kind of finalize things.
We're going to be narrowing it down to finalize to bill and file.
And then, then you're also going to make a submission to the State Corporation Commission, which you're going to advise us of.
Yes, sir.
And that process will start. So, at that point, I think if we're going to have a public hearing, that's when we need to have the public hearing so everybody has a chance to input it because they're going to make, the State Corporation Commission is actually going to make the decision.
Yes, sir.
So, if we're going to get the most bang for our buck, we need to make that statement just part of that process.
I would think so, yes, sir.
So, if that's okay with you, it's, once we hear from them, then we'll move forward with the next phase where we can have, the people that have a problem can have an impact on it.
I just want to make sure that the folks that are impacted have a chance to speak. And when that, if it's thirty days wait, I don't care about that long as they have their opportunity to speak on this.
So, I think it's most appropriate, from what I'm hearing, that we have that public hearing after you've submitted your, after you made your submission to State Corporation Commission. We can request a public hearing from them and then everybody who has any, any involvement and at that point can express their concerns and that's when it'll do the most good.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, great. So, if there's nothing else, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go now to new business. So, we're going to, the board is going, will consider authorizing a letter for the chairman to sign supporting the value-added produce grant request being submitted by USDA by Old House Vineyards. Carl was here, is he still here? Oh, okay.
Yes, I, 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 what it is, it costs the county no money and it has to do with production alone there, so it's, it's done by Old House.
Yes, sir. Yes, yeah, we are.
But anyway, it costs the county nothing, but they have letters of support from all the, a lot of their customers and a lot of their people in the neighborhood and how much they do for the county and what it, what it adds, you know, like the Wicked Bottom Run and the, brings people in from all over the area and the Chili Fest brings people in from all over the East Coast as far as Texas. So, anyway, what it is, is just a letter of stating that they are good for the community, they have been a good family operation and things like that and that they will, and they hopefully are applying for this. Government has, I think it's two million dollars that they send to wineries and they, they allocate like two hundred thousand of it to the state of Virginia and the different wineries have put in for this money. There comes Carl if he wants to explain any further.
You, you walked into just the right time, Carl. Come forward. We're discussing Old House and the current grant request.
Mr. Chairman, it's a USDA grant for two hundred thousand dollars. There's no local match. The money will be used to reimburse Old House on working capital items.
Okay.
And there, one thing, Carl, their share would not be two hundred thousand. That's for the whole state is two hundred thousand. They might get twenty thousand or fifty thousand.
Get the total grant.
I think their share's like thirty thousand or something?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions for Carl?
I make a motion if we write a letter to be signed by yourself.
In support of? We have a, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any votes? Thank you, Carl. Okay, I believe that brings us to the committee reports, airport committee. I don't think we have anything. Public Works?
Yes, sir, we do have one motion. The Public Works Committee recommends awarding a contract to relocate the Greens Corner Wastewater Treatment Plant to Patterson Construction for base bid number one in the amount of eight hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and having county staff complete base bid number two for fifty thousand. There's currently seven hundred thirty-three thousand in the CIP for the relocation. Therefore, a budget transfer of a hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-four will be required to complete the relocation and that's in form of a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Then we'll have a discussion. Okay. I have a question. Valerie, the one hundred fifty-eight thousand we're going to have transferred, will that be in this budget year or next?
It would happen now and those are CIP projects, so as long as the projects are open, the funding will carry forward to the next year.
Okay, cool. So, all right, great. That's a question. Any questions, Paul?
Yeah. I've got one question. I've got one. Where is located now?
Yes.
We had an agreement without paying the rent and everything, they do some of that.
Yes.
Now, they'll get, they would have some, just in line.
On the town line.
They'll be served by the town line that the town built as part of our agreement with them.
Okay, thank you.
Is that project, finished then? Yes. That project was completed and the Greens Corner plant now is offline.
And just to refresh everyone's memory, that's a hundred sixty thousand in the CIP for those taps.
That's the hundred sixty thousand that was included today as for the obligation to the Helms for sewer taps, yes.
Okay. Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple. Paul, well, existing taps there, existing service, how long will it take to recoup the cost of upgrading this with existing taps or will it ever pay for itself?
It would, it depends on who develops. The existing development will not, it would all be on the back of any future development and that just depends on what they build between the air park and twenty-nine. There's a lot of by right zoning out there for commercial industrial zoning. It just depends on what they build and how much water and sewer they need, whether or not it would recover.
So, if we're, we're going into this at a deficit, it's actually going to be operating at a deficit?
Yes. And right now, we have, the current plant is almost at capacity, so we would either be faced with building a new plant to address the need out there or relocating this plant. Relocating this plant is certainly cheaper than building a new plant.
On operational cost, since we'll, we'll have high capacity and new plant, small amounts of fluid going into it.
Is that going to cause us a problem as far as operational costs?
The operational costs should be incremental if, if at all. The plant that we're having right now, if we can continue under the same treatment limits we have for the plant now, we wouldn't have to add the chemicals. So, the labor and the operating cost would be pretty close to the same. We will have additional costs for some power, but it won't be a significant increase.
Sure that we're not setting ourselves up for another North Wales situation. Outside of air park, have there been any inquiries as far as new services outside of the air park?
For county service?
Yeah, for, for the sewer and water services. Have there been any interest in it?
All the inquiries we get right now are around the town. We've had one new, two new inquiries at the air park itself. One is on the Willow Run property and another one is on some of the, two new projects that are coming forward out there right now for construction that are both planned for this summer. There's two new connections, two new potential connections this year.
When the, when the plant is completed, would fifty, at fifty percent of capacity, would fifty percent of capacity take care of the operational cost or seventy, what, what percentage would take care of the operational costs or make it?
What's the break even for the operating cost?
Yeah.
It's about double what it is now. We're making about half. So, we would need to double the, either the revenue or the connections and it just depends on the businesses that come, how much water and sewer they use. We have some very large businesses that don't use any water and sewer, hardly any. So, it just depends on how much, if they're a water user or not, if it's just domestic toilets, the first source and Euro composite, some of those very large businesses use very little water. So, they're a good business to have, but they don't use a lot of water and sewer services, but they have to have it.[1723.86]
And also, up in the Brandy area, I know that there was talk of possibly putting this plant there in the Brandy area, and there was concern about operating two plants, and I understand that. But the possibility of taking lines from this to Brandy, is that not feasible because of the length?
Well, the master plan shows us, one option is putting a pump station in Brandy and sending all the wastewater down to the airpark. And then it's just a factor of distance. The Brandy area doesn't have a lot of proposed development to pay for new development. I mean, they do have septic problems, and it's, you're kind of in the quandary of, do you put the sewer line and hope they come? Or do you wait for a large developer to help put it in? But the plan is to build a forest main from Brandy and send all the wastewater down to the airpark.
Ms. Frazier, I'm gonna have to give someone else a chance to ask them questions.
Sorry.
Anyone else have any questions of Paul about the wastewater treatment plant? Okay.
Well, I only want to make a comment, though, that it would probably be a benefit to have this available for attracting new industry to the area. I mean, if we don't have it, but if somebody's looking for that and it's in place, that would help us, you know, maybe acquire a new company. So, for me, it's like a real, you know, it's an opportunity.
Ms. Walker?
Is this system, does the system have different cells so that you don't have to utilize the whole facility at one time, or?
Yeah, it's two trains. There are two, so you can use half the plant or the whole plant. Right now, we're permitting it so we can use half of the plant or the whole plant. So, we wouldn't trigger the additional treatment requirements until you use the whole plant. So, you can alternate back and forth on the halves right now. So, you can, you can scale it up or scale it down without.
In terms of the operating costs and things and so forth, it, that, it's reducing the cost until there gets ample clients.
Right. You can scale up the capacity just on paper without having to make any changes. It'll be there. It's just what do you write the permit for?
And, you know, and to tag on to what Ms. Hanson said, I mean, if you have the sewer plant there and you have the sewer capacity available, it's just one hurdle you don't have to cross if you have a business that wants to locate, or residents that wants to locate in that area. We have had some failing sewer systems in Brandy Station. If we got enough people that wanted to tag onto the system, we could obviously, you know, run that line out. And that would help our, in terms of operational cost. So, there are some options here. There's a lot of positives for having it as opposed to a lot of negatives for having it, so. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had quite a bit of discussion. Is there anything else anyone would like to add before we go to the motion? Okay, all those in favor of making the, awarding the contract for the movement of the plant signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, we'll move now to Building and Grounds Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of things. First thing is Galveston Marshall Building, and its subject is Consider a Resolution Requesting Recreational Excess Grant Funding From the Virginia Department of Transportation to Improve Woolford Street. The action requested is, Building and Grounds Committee recommends approving the attached resolution requesting up to the maximum amount of state funding available for our VDOT recreational excess grant, including up to one hundred thousand dollars in matching funds. Matching funds will come from the county CIP account for Woolford Street improvements, and also the childcare fund balance. Paul will go over the summary of this.
Before you do that, Paul, we have a motion from, coming from committee. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, now Paul.
Mr. Chairman, this is the application that we prepared in March to go to the CTB in April. VDOT reviewed our application. We'd originally requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of recreational access funds with no local match. VDOT encouraged us, after reviewing the application, to go ahead and include the matching funds in our request. That's money that would be available at award of the contract if we do need it. If we don't ask for it now, then it would not be available later. All these grants have to be submitted without the benefit of engineering designs and plans, so they're very preliminary. So, they encouraged us to go ahead and apply for it and have it available. It is a reimbursement grant, so if the bids come in lower than that, we only get to receive actual reimbursement of monies we pay out. So, we can get up to four hundred and fifty thousand, but that just depends on where it ends up.
So, the actual grant request is for three hundred and fifty thousand or is for two hundred and fifty thousand?
The actual grant request is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of VDOT money and a hundred thousand dollars of county match, which would be from our CIP fund and from the childcare fund balance.
And I understand the childcare is gonna, they're gonna, the lion's share of that.
They're providing twenty-five thousand, and the seventy-five thousand is in the county CIP for improvements to the site. We were gonna lower the playground area to reduce the drainage.
Which were already in the CIP. There's no additional new, there's no new money coming out of that?
No.
Okay.
This will go to the CTB meeting in June if it's approved. And there's a new, a revised resolution in your package requesting up to the maximum amount of funds.
And it should be noted that all of this, the grant funding would be used for street improvements on Woolford Street?
Correct.
Which, okay. Any further discussion or? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item?
This next item comes from Parks and Rec. Building and Grounds Committee recommends board approve a resolution of appreciation and acceptance of concession building B from the Culpeper Recreation Foundation Incorporated to the County of Culpeper. John, you wanna come forward?
You need to get a second before we have any discussion. Okay? So, John, tell us what's happening.
Well, basically, this is, we've done this before with the foundation. It's after they've completed the concession stand that the board has the opportunity to accept it into the county. The concession stand is concession stand B, which is the one that'll be up by the baseball complex. And I have just asked that we, of course, we have a couple other things to finish off in the building before we get our permit, and then it would be available for the board to actually accept.
So, we're accepting it, but it's not quite ready for acceptance. Is that what you're saying?
We're basically laying the groundwork to accept it, and then we sign it as it gets done, yes.
All right, so we're gonna go and approve the acceptance once you get all the proper documentation?
Correct.
Okay. So, any questions, John? Everybody understand what we're doing? And I might add that that was built without any county funds. Is that correct? It was all donated funds from the Recreation Foundation. This is the second one they built that way?
This is the second one they built, yes. And again, it's for revenue stream for the associations.
Well, they should be commended for building two very nice structures at no cost to the county, which we get the use of at some point down the road.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I believe that concludes Building and Grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's move to Rules Committee.
All right, Mr. Chairman, first item is a discussion on social media policy. And it was recommended from the committee that the board consider the social media policy. There is a several-page draft of the social media policy. And it was recommended that we move it forward to the full board for discussion. But if there's no...
For discussion or for approval?
No negative discussion, I guess we can approve it.
Okay. We have a motion coming out of committee to at least review the media policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And Sandy, why don't you go over kind of what this is about briefly?
Does that mean you want some background, Mr. Chairman?
I just want a very succinct presentation.
Okay. Well, the purpose of this draft is to put in some, into place a set of policies and standards that really put our employees on notice that their off-duty online conduct may expose them to employment actions or disciplinary actions here in the workplace. I apologize for my voice. I'm a little bit under the weather here. But what was proposed here attempts to do a couple things. First, to put those employees on notice as indicated. It also provides a foundation by which departments can seek authorization from either the administration or the board to have access to social media websites. Right now, our access is limited. I believe there are two departments that may have access to social media websites, but there are others who desire that, but right now, there is no policy in place for them to utilize to get that, that access. And so, in summary, I'll go very quickly through the policy, just in case folks haven't had a chance to read it. We have made sure that we've included some language that recognizes that employees have a right to engage in online conduct off-duty and to speak as they see fit in most instances, especially in engaging their rights to engage concerted activity, which under case law is the opportunity to speak out about working conditions in your workplace. The policy goes on to clarify those instances where the online conduct would not be acceptable or authorized. And we've tried to be as specific as we can with the type of activity that would maybe expose an employee to disciplinary action. So, unlawful conduct would includes engaging in what would be considered harassing speech online, sexual harassment, disclosing confidential information of customers of the county or some of the county's records in a form that was unauthorized. Those types of things would be subject to some disciplinary action. And then we left a little provision that gave, gives the county the right to remove certain conduct or postings if the county decided to implement its own website or have pages that individuals could post to. By and large, the, the policy is fairly broad. We've taken some care to make sure that the activity that we're trying to regulate isn't so broad as to not put the employees on proper notice. But again, the, the purpose for this was to have an established baseline by which employees were given due notice that their off-duty online conduct may expose them to disciplinary action. And I could go into further details as you see fit, sir.
Okay, I guess everybody has a general idea of what we're doing. And Ernie, you have a comment?
Yes, I've taken a look at this draft, and I absolutely agree that you do need some policy, and we need to set some guidelines. This, this will give us a beginning framework, and then, then I would expect that sometime in the near future, as we start to develop some of these things, that we come back to the board with maybe some clarifications or back to the personnel committee to, to make some adjustments as are appropriate. But this, this is a good start, as I see it, for us to, to get started on it.
Okay, any questions of the board? From the board? Mr. Walker?
Well, again, the, the motion from Rules was to have some discussion. Now that we've had the discussion, I guess Rules Committee would make a motion to move forward with the, with the, turn it from draft to, to make it a policy.
Okay.
Second.
So, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the current motion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess it would be a, kind of a work in progress, is what we're looking for here?
What we're trying to do is get something in place from which we can work from. Currently, we do not have a social media policy. There have been requests from departments where they need it for advertisement purposes, for information purposes for the general public. And currently, they're not allowed to do that. Parks and Rec is a good example. So, the purpose of having the policy is to have some basic guidelines in place from which we can build upon. And then we can amend it as, you know, as time goes on. So, yes, is the answer to your question. Any further questions or discussions? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, second item coming out of Rules is approval of the license agreement between Culpeper County and Culpeper County Little League Baseball to operate concession stand B located in the baseball complex in the Culpeper Sports Complex.
Second.
All right, John, you wanna just elaborate?
No.
Briefly?
Well, the purpose of the agreement, of course, is to allow the baseball association to operate the concession stand and for the purpose of revenue raising. So, it's basically just that agreement between the two parties.
And we have a similar agreement already with...
We do have a similar agreement with football soccer.
With complex A, which they use for fundraising to support their activities.
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right, are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
All right, next item coming out of Rules is the, the committee recommends approval of the Salem Volunteer Fire Department pumper truck purchase at a cost of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars by the Salem Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Just for informational purposes, we are not actually endorsing the purchase. We're endorsing the purchase, but we're not, we're not helping with the financing of the purchase. Is that correct? You guys wanna come forward and just address it, just in case anyone has any questions?
It's a rubber stamp.
All we're really doing is saying we agree you need it.
Yes, sir, we do. We're increasing our water capacity and the new tanker.
Okay, cool. Any questions of Salem? Ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Go forth and bye. Okay, that brings us to Quarterly Reports E-91. You have nothing, or you do have something, I'm sorry. Quarterly Reports, E-91 Committee. Okay. Who's representing E-91?
Nine-one-one?
I guess I can. I'm not, I think I'm on the committee. The committee recommends approval of Public Safety Communications Center Agreement to replace the existing agreement from September tenth, nineteen ninety-six, and a supplemental agreement dated December fourth, two thousand and one.
Okay, so, I think we just updated...
Yeah, we're just updating. It's basically, it's basically just, you know, names and companies and addresses.
Yeah, I actually spoke with Chris yesterday about this. It'll be before the town council next week. Frank and Chris had worked on it to try to update some of the language and just to really refresh the agreement that was already existing. There wasn't any real substance changes, I understand. It was really just cleaning up the agreement a little bit.
And I think just for informational purposes, this agreement was back in nineteen ninety-six, and we haven't really looked at it since nineteen ninety-six. And we decided to go through it and then just update it. So, I think it's pretty nondescript, so.
I have a quick question.
Let me get a second if you would.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Now, go ahead.
Under, under disposition of property and understand that some of the questions that arose in the original agreement were related to purchase of equipment and property. And the statement is that all equipment in, in and about the center jointly purchased shall be allocated between the county and the town, and the town having ownership of thirty-three percent, and the county owning sixty-seven percent of such property. And then it goes on to talk about the disposition, but it doesn't specifically talk about the radio system that we pay for a hundred percent. And, and I'm just wondering if we need to have any language in there clarifying that? Or if, in fact, it's clear enough that, that that won't be a discussion later on in future years?
Mr. Chairman?
John, go ahead.
If I can interject here, I did work on this with Mr. Bozio and Mr. Hively. And really, the intent of revisiting this agreement was to, to clarify that sixty-seven, thirty-three percent split, make it clear that that applied to the center itself and the equipment within it. Earlier in the agreement, it, it clarifies that that does not apply to the radio towers and RF equipment and, and indicates that the radios themselves are up to the individual entities. So, at least in our minds, Mr. Hively, Mr. Bozio, and myself, the, the agreement paints a clear picture that everybody buys their own radios, the county pays for towers and RF equipment, and everything at the center, including the building and everything in it, is the sixty-seven, thirty-three percent split. So, I think it's fairly clear, and that was really the intent of rewriting the agreement.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that on the record, it was clear.
Sandy, do you have anything to add, or?
That's found in section six C of the agreement, so we take care of that specific question.
Okay, so we have revision of the agreement before us. I think we have a second, so is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the revision signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That brings us to Public Safety.
Okay, out of Public Safety, the committee recommends that the board award the fire and EMS study contract to Public Safety Solutions, Inc. in the amount of thirty-nine, eight fifty. And also, we need a motion, I mean, I'm making a motion to approve the budget with the amendment that's attached.
Okay.
And Alan Culpeper is here to expand on this.
I think the budget, did the budget not include this amount?
It's correct. The current budget did not include this because the summit happened after the budget was already adopted.
So, we would need a budget res, okay.
Yes, sir, and there's a budget amendment attached in your information.
All right, so this would be a, I think we can do it in one motion. I believe we can approve the amount and the appropriation at the same time. So, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and we have any discussion? Alan, you wanna touch base on this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
I'm the board. Yeah, back the summer, the summit, Fire and Rescue Summit was, I believe, was in October two thousand and fourteen. And it was desire of the county to collaborate with fire and rescue and paid EMS unit to do a collaborative study on the assessment and the analysis to identify the needs, the response to... to do a collaborative study on the assessment and the analysis to identify the needs, the response times, certain types of equipment of this study. We did go out for an RFP for this back in the first year, I believe it was. We received five proposals and the recommendation award is to Public Safety Solutions for this. An amount, I think it was $39,000.
$850,000.
Eight hundred, yep. Payable 20% signing the contract, 40% halfway through, and 40% on completion.
That's standard terms, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What's the timeline? What's the timeline to have this completed?
I believe it was anywhere from three to four months to have it completed. I don't have the contract right in front of me.
Maybe by September.
Oh, yeah. I want to say, for some reason, I want to say August timeframe it should be complete. They'll have a draft with a review of the fire and EMS and the county, and then the final around September.
At the county or the board, well, remember, we had this discussion about, you know, funding for the, additional funding and increased funding for the Fire and Rescue Association over time. And it was thought that the board needed to have a real good idea as to, you know, the allocation of the resources, where we're spending the money, what, what the needs are. And this study is supposed to help us clearly delineate that with the cooperation of the fire, rescue and EMS people. Go ahead.
Oh, well, you just, with the cooperation, they're totally on board with this concept?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thanks.
And we got their input on the requirements of the study and what the study should entail. And they've, they've had input on all that. Okay, so you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Thank you. All right, that brings us to Carl Sacks. And just for clarification, that motion included both the study and also the appropriation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Just some brief informational items. Couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to be part of a Virginia contingent that went to the Craft Brewers Convention in Portland, Oregon. We were well represented in addition.
Why wasn't I included in that?
You must have missed the memo. Paige Reed, the Town Director of Tours, Helen Coffin from the Central Virginia Partnership attended. There was a group from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership and the Virginia Department of Agriculture. Secretary of Commerce Maurice Jones was there. Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry Todd Haymore was there. They hosted a Virginia reception and invited people to come and learn more about Virginia. We went for several reasons. First of all, the growth of the craft brew industry is pretty tremendous. Our second craft brewer in Culpeper is about to open. And there's been interest in Virginia by major craft brewers, the Stone Brewery going to Richmond. We worked with and were under consideration for a major brewery project, codename Bravo Four. So there was some interest to see if we could latch on to some additional interest in coming to the East Coast and locate a brewery there. There were over 600 exhibitors that produced, produced all the things that go into making beer, from the hops growers to the people that build the vats, to the bottlers, to the people that put the labels on. And all those types of businesses follow where the brewers go. And we happened to strike up a conversation with a distributor from Manitoba, Canada, who basically sells kind of an innovative approach. It's called a poly keg. And these are disposable kegs. And for small craft brewers, just the ownership, maintenance, transportation, cleaning of permanent steel kegs is a huge cost. And there are companies that are innovatively looking at ways of reducing that cost. This company imports plastic kegs from Italy. And they're basically one-way, use once and throw away and recycle kegs. So that was some interest that we were trying to explore. Also, just understanding the, the industry, the craft brewing industry, to help our entrepreneurs. And we're approached by folks that are saying, we'd like to get into craft brewing. So we know the lingo and we know the terms and we can have a somewhat intelligent conversation with those, those folks. As I mentioned, over 600 exhibitors had credentials to get in. 11,000 people went through the doors of, of the brewery conference. So it was a lot of good exposure, a lot of good networking. There were about 11, 12 other economic developers in the Virginia contingent. And looking forward to next year's conference, which is in Philadelphia. Pardon me? We can all go to Philadelphia, we can all get on a train and, and go to Philadelphia. Second item, our bus, the County Express, had 733 riders in the, in the month of March. And then finally, I'd just like to remind you that at the conclusion of this morning's meeting, we're lunch guests at Continental Automotive and for a brief presentation and a plant tour if anyone wants to tour the plant. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions to Carl? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That brings us to closed session. Ms. Fritz?
Okay, I make a motion to, sorry, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared.
It's on your agenda.
Okay. Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, Pren A, Print 7, for consultation and briefing with legal counsel employed by the county pertaining to actual litigation and regarding specific legal matters recurring to provision of legal advice by such coun, counsel. Motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? We'll take a five-minute recess while everybody leaves the room, then we'll resume.